Mrs. Montag, would you call the board?
Mr. Crowder.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mrs. Nofel.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mrs. Weber.
Here.
Mrs. Steve.
Here.
To begin our meetings, we have public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Waltoes School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, community members. The board is regularly scheduled meetings providing an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The board has used all comments and will respectfully continue this in the process of making. The board requests that individuals limit their comments on each agenda to three minutes. Following any comments, an individual board member may respond on the issue raised, however it is not the intention of the public comment portion of the agenda for the board to enter into the debate of the meeting. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If anyone has a comment on an item not on the next agenda, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment.
We can hardly hear you. I don't know if you've got the microphone or not, or is it my hearing?
So. Is there any public comment on a non-agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to a table of consent agenda. Prior to calling for a motion to approve the consent agenda, would you be up to any individuals here to agree to it tonight? Mr. Hughes.
Sure. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce our new associate principal to Waltoes High School, Mike Hoine. Mike is here with his family as well. That's his teacher in the district, and his three children are here in case there was any doubt about what school he works for. Mr. Hoine is a graduate of Waltoes High School and has worked previously at Longteensville and most recently at Whitman Middle School as a math teacher. So, welcome, Mr. Hoine.
And Mr. Clarke.
It's always tough to follow Mr. Hughes.
I'm here tonight to introduce our new athletic director at Tulsa West High School. His name is Nathan Belaney. Nathan, give the wave. Nathan has three years of experience in Sterling, Illinois as the previous athletic director there, and he was actually being courted by three other school districts. Three other school districts. And what sold me on him the most was when he said, "I want to be a Trojan." And I said, "What's one of the first things you're going to do for us, Nathan?" And he said, "You know, Mr. Clarke, I think that athletics should be something that supports academics, and we've got to make sure that kids are doing better in the classroom." So, we're excited to have Nathan, and right now he's commuting from here to Sheboygan every day where his parents live, and his wife is trying to sell the house down in Sterling, Illinois. So, we hope to get him here soon.
Welcome, Nathan.
Following those introductions, are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to review for separate discussion or action? Mrs. Randall.
No. Is this a good time to offer congratulations?
Not yet.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move to approve. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Crowder. I would note for the record that the monthly track register is present if anyone cares to share you it. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda prior to taking the vote? Is there any community comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Montag, would you call the board? Mr. Crowder.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Nofel.
Yes.
Mr. Randall.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes.
Mrs. Steve. Yes. Now, just.
Thank you. I do want to offer congratulations to both the members of the starters. I know that the list of candidates was lengthy, and that speaks very well of you being here tonight, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move on now to human resources. Mrs. Weber.
It is recommended that the school board approve the tentative agreement reached between the Waltoes Education Support Association, WESA, and the Waltoes School District on May 20, 2010, which was ratified by members of LISA, including A, wage increases of 1.5, 1.5 in two points in the 2009-10 year, 2010-11 year, and 2011-12 school years; B, your average total compensation increase of 4.2 percent; B, a change in health insurance benefits to the revised Plan B; and C, other language changes as set forth in the tenet agreement and ISO move.
Is there a second? Second? Thank you. There is very important discussion. Is there any community comments on this agenda, Mr. Meyer? Mrs. Montag, would you call the board? Mr. Crowder.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Nofel.
Yes.
Mr. Randall.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes.
Mrs. Steve. Yes. We move on to student services. Mrs. Randall.
It's recommended that the school board accept 32 new students from the open enrollment waiting list for senior kindergarten, grade one and grade two for the 2010-11 school year and ISO move.
And number two?
Second.
It is recommended that the school board approve the revisions to policy 5517.01. Bullying is a policy that from the OHL which was drafted for EPI's model policy to align the legislative requirements enacted in the 2009 Wisconsin Act 309 and ISO move.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer. Is there any board discussion? Mrs. Weber.
Two questions. Under the policy, the page, I said, no page, it's the last page, why was guardian removed under notification of their parents and/or guardians, and guardian is removed in two different locations? Why was guardian removed?
I actually contacted the OHL and asked that question of them, and essentially it's assumed in the language in the statute that when you say guardian, it's all, or I'm sorry, when you say parent, it's all inclusive. So, their response to me was that it's not necessary to have repetitive language of parent and/or guardian. When you identify parent, guardian is captured in that language.
That, and that's also consistent throughout all of the policies in a lot of the different languages, which the philosophy explains that, I mean, so parent, that's what you mean. This is superintendent, and and/or president, who are included in the standard repetitive case throughout all of our policies. So, it's consistent with our policies.
I don't agree, but I can accept. And then I have one more question here. What, I'm pleased that the open enrollment numbers could be increased. What changed that made it possible for SK 3, 1, and 2 to have, that we would accept more students?
We have, when looking at open enrollment, open seats, we need to look at, because there's a part in the statute and policy that accepts the current non-resident enrollment, and when we, from the time when we had our initial projections of class sizes in December to now, we've had 32, 32 students that have exited. So, to maintain an open enrollment level, that's why we're recommending 32 additional, 32 additional students.
It's 32 have left the district, not necessarily open enrollment, but just within the district, 32 have moved or?
32 non-resident students have exited the district. And that does not include those that have graduated.
Okay.
Mrs. Randall.
I was going to ask about this too. The initial approval was based on class size?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And if this doesn't exceed that, why does this require separate?
This could exceed it in some space, in some seats. We've had students, some of the students have left JK through 12, and our intent is to not add students back at any grade levels other than SK, JK, or SK 1 and 2. And the reason being, I think after this past year, we found out that, or we believe that it's more successful for students to begin their district earlier, instead of inserting them into classes at the high school level and middle school level. Our belief is that we can have better success with the students, and students could have a better chance of success by studying earlier. So, that's where the recommendation comes. So, the exiting students are throughout all grade levels, but we want to concentrate those students into the classes, and maintaining reasonable class sizes at those three grades or so.
Okay. And I guess I disagree with the Villan High School. You know, hopefully we have data to support that, but I know that we can have often quality students coming out of the K8 private system. So, I think hopefully we have the right to do that, so it's not working well.
No, that's a good point. It's not, it's partly, I guess it's not fair to make a blanket statement saying that kids aren't going to be successful, but.
So, that, and then the other thing, why not JK? Why not SK?
Because a number of students that we added, it's 0.5. So, we thought that if we're adding students as the full-time students, which starts in SK 1 and 2, the other piece, particular SK, we know if we start them there, that those students will remain with us. But the main thing is adding the number of students and not being in a situation where we're forced in the next two weeks to split classes because we have additional open enrollment students. Because JK is generally our most fluid numbers in particular right now. Past three days for sure, student services have been inundated with new registrations, which is a good thing.
Thank you.
Your last comment leads to my question, which was, are you certain that we can add these 32 students without adding new sections?
I'm certainly waiting to see if our class sections are below 22 at this point throughout the entire district, and we would not add more beyond that.
Mr. Meyer.
There's a deadline that kicks in as to when seats can be offered. Can you remind me when that is?
August 20th is the deadline as to when we have to notify families.
And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but based on our original planning, SK, we were determining open spaces for open enrollment students once, or if we were under 18 students in a classroom, and then at some grade level it goes up to 20. Is that, was that first grade or second grade?
First grade.
First grade. So, and I guess one concern that I have is just wanting to make sure that we're not being inconsistent by adding students if we're adding seats in classrooms where the numbers are already at 18 or 20 in SK of our first grade. Do we run into any legal ramifications or issues if that is the case?
As long as we're looking at total non-resident enrollment, and we're taking students off the waiting lists, there's not a pit process, and we're within the legal boundaries of open enrollment statute.
And just final verification question. Do you know, or do you have a sense of how those 32 students would be spread out over the three grade levels, SK, grade 1, grade 2? Could be relatively.
Looking at determining where the smallest class sizes are, they're kind of right now is, as I looked at them today, and it's pretty fluid, so I looked at them today, there's some obvious places where there would be more significant space. So, we would sit down after approval and make determination to try to distribute them across the buildings and have some students join each building. But recognizing that some of our buildings, our SK grades 1 and grades 2 are pretty full by this point.
So, wouldn't necessarily be equal among the three grade levels?
No.
Well, and one other thing we will do once we've identified the sections is we will look at the intra-district transfer requests that have been denied, and if there is an intra-district transfer request that has been denied into a section that we are adding a student, we will move that intra-district transfer student into that position if we create an opening in the other building. So, we can grant those prior to adding those few more sections out again.
Mr. Meyer.
I'm going to ask Mr. Ray a question a little differently about class size. Are we adding open enrollment students above, in classes above the 18 or 20 student threshold? Did we do that at any point previously?
Yes.
And why are we doing that?
To maintain that non-resident enrollment at the level which we identified where we were for the year, for this past year.
So, we have some conflicting policies on that?
Well, this isn't a policy, well, it's taking students off the waiting lists.
Just one quick follow-up on the JK question. Do we have any classes that are like what people used to call bubble classes, where they're at 18 or near 18, and so, you know, if we get a few more enrollments and we've placed, you know, we could place, use some of those 32, split those classes? Is that a possibility?
We've been watching them. Currently, there's not, there's not any section that's at, or any building that's at that point. We have one or two that might be getting close, but not at this point at the JK level, where we'd be considering a split. We already have that each building, aside from Wilton's, the only building that has one section of JK. All the other buildings have two sections of JK, and at this point, and Roosevelt has three sections, so none are close to a split at this point.
How many are, we stood at Wilton's JK?
Seventeen, all right, sorry. Yeah, seventeen.
If we did, if we did split JK, and there was space, we would be able to.
We have a piece of that, that's always.
And we're going to, we look at, maybe Roosevelt was one that we anticipated we'd put three sections, started at two, again, as the enrollments change on a daily basis right now, something that's up to date.
Would that require an amendment to the?
Now, if we have 50 students, 50 students, and we split from two sections into three, we would have four, we're already at four non-resident, or four open enrollment students to the JK class to get that to 18.
That's under the initial permission. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
I'm going to support this motion. Regarding open enrollment, it seems to be less of a policy question and more of a leveling our responsibilities and resources question on a management basis. It seems to be well thought out with all the various ends announced considered, so I will support this.
Any further board comments on other student services items? Is there any community comments on the student service items before us today? Seeing none, Mrs. Montag, would you call the board? Mr. Crowder.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Nofel.
Yes.
Mr. Randall.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes.
Mrs. Steve. Yes. That brings us to reports to the board.
Would you call the board's reports? I have a question, Mr. Scherer. How are we with teacher positions? Are there any open positions yet throughout the district?
Yes, yes, there are. There are these two part-time music vacancies that are still open. When I think of them off the top of my head, I'm sure that.
Seventh grade man.
Seventh grade man.
Mr. Please.
Two yellow teacher. Very much so. That might, there you go. Some might be just about a sub toilet of other teachers vacancies.
At the start, at the start of school, you hopefully have each one of those positions?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Now, we come to the superintendent's board. Dr. Erdl.
At the last meeting, there was a presentation regarding interest in purchasing a piece of property that is located adjacent to Longfellow, across the road from Longfellow School and adjacent to the Waltoes Cemetery, and it's brought back up for board conversation and discussion regarding whether or not the district does have property for sale and whether or not there is interest in pursuing this property.
Before we begin the conversation, I would note that Mrs. Weber is a member of both this board and the board which came represented to us last time and will not take part in any of this conversation. I would also note that we, the preliminary question we need to discuss is not the specific presentation, it's looking at whether there is any interest in something, but I want to ask the board members to focus on that topic this time. Mr. Crowder.
I have an open mind on this at this point. I look at the table discussion. We've not received any additional information about this topic. I mean, it's hard to know how to feel about this. For example, things I would look for would be a district master plan for maintenance and long-term building replacement, financial analysis of the property, what it means to the district. Probably came to mind selling the property to private enterprise. I mean, we've not received, we haven't received any additional information to help guide my thinking on this, so I think we should table the discussion until we get, you know, more factual information to help guide the discussion. Unless we're having a purely philosophical discussion, whether we feel like something is something.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
To table because I would like to hear other general comments on the topic, and I feel that such a motion may well be appropriate after we discuss a little bit further. My initial comment on, my, my initial, my initial comment is that. It's my personality. Okay, my initial comment is that we, of course, are in the most depressed real estate market in a number of decades. The question of whether anyone sells real estate in this market, to me hinges on whether it will be coupled with a purchase of a larger piece of real property, in that if someone is selling their house now, and they say, "I'm going to sell my house and lose my shit," I, this is where you. If someone is going to sell their house now, it makes perfect sense if they wish to buy a bigger house, because you'll sell, you'll sell low, but the thing, the corresponding thing that you're going to buy, you're also going to buy at a bargain price. So, it's the perfect time to up, upsize. By the same token, it's the worst time to downsize, because if I'm going to sell, I'm going to get a rock bottom price in return, and I won't have any compensating transaction on the other end of the whole thing in order to make up for my loss. So, on that basis, unless there's some strategic reason for the board to sell real estate now, other than the fact that someone has expressed interest in buying it, if I was looking to buy real estate, this is the perfect time to go up around and ask people if they'll sell me their land, because I know I'm going to get the best price ever, and they're going to get the worst price ever. So, initially, that's my perspective on this. This is no time to be selling land unless there is some plan to purchase another parcel somewhere else for compensating use, and as Mr. Crowder has said, no broad plan has been presented to us along that line of thinking.
Mrs. Randall.
I understand your point. I would take it a step further. Yeah, Mrs. Steve, we can talk about the particular parcel, but not any potential buyers.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so, so something to think about in Mr. Meyer's comments is, is there ever going to be a good time to sell that particular piece? Is anybody else going to want it? That might be a discussion to him. My question to Dr. Erdl is, when was this purchased, and when was the portion of it that is developed for athletic fields, when was that done?
Was purchased in 1988, and prior to that time, there was a baseball field on it and was being used by district students, and I think one of the compelling reasons, from my understanding, to purchase the land was that so it wasn't sold to someone else that it wouldn't allow us to use the property. There was roughly, Bruce Johnson had said roughly $25,000 within the next couple of years after 1988 invested into the field for drainage, for upgrade, fencing, storage, and some other improvements that were done with the property.
Is that to the portion that's unused now that you're talking about?
That was to the portion, the baseball portion.
I know. Can you tell me what is in use on the entire parcel? This was one larger parcel, right?
Right.
Okay, and there's interest in purchasing back a portion of that?
All our, all our, all our portions.
Okay. And when was the last time we did any developments?
1990, 1992 was the last time there was, I think the shed was the last time there was.
And is it part of any master plan? Is there a development plan for this?
No.
On this parcel?
Not this time. I think it's, it's during tour and upgrades of the field, continuing up towards the baseball field. But I think the other piece to understand too is as we've gone to the long-range plan, part of the long-range plan was looking at our whole facilities and coming up with that master plan. Do we have one right now? No. Is it something that we wanted to work on? Yes, as a direction for the long-range plan.
Any other board comment? I guess Mike. My agri groups, I guess, are showing here, because I have a tendency to not want to sell land unless there's a really compelling reason to do so. And I haven't been presented with anything at this point. I don't think that it's, there's a compelling reason for the district to sell any property if, from the district's point of view. I understand that there's a party who's very interested in it, but I have not been presented with anything that says this is what's best for the district. And I agree with both Mr. Meyer and Mr. Crowder that we need to know what the grand schemes were, because we need to know what the long-term planning is for our property before we decide whether or not we have any that we wish to dispose of. So, as this is before we know, I cannot be in support of selling district property because I haven't been given any reason why that's what's best for the district, and that there's meant any consideration of the long-term needs of the district. So, I look forward to the long-term planning process continuing, having that, that plan presented before us, but until we have that, I am not equipped to dispose of an asset of the district. So, that's my question at this point. Mrs. Nofel.
I know sometimes people think that when you don't say anything, you're like, leaving one another, and at this point in time, all I can say is, I'm certainly going to need a lot more information on this potential interest, which we don't have the, that type of information, and we also need some more internal information. So, I am reserving any decision-making pending that coming forward.
Mr. Meyer.
I'd just like to add that pretty much every meeting this board is grateful to boards of the past for the sound, long-range thinking that has been done in financial matters. matters, and sort of adding to Mrs. Seig's point, the idea of selling land, um, ownership of land is- on purchase or sale of land, and, you know, I would like to leave some boards twenty and thirty years from now, hopefully the benefit of the same wisdom that we have benefited from with respect to decisions such as these, so, um, but it's very hard to take those long-term views, um, which goes to Will Rogers' land, you know, my land, the Lord made it so he's not experiencing more, something to that effect, so, thank you.
Any further board comment?
I, I'm just kind of, I find this really difficult, um, because we, we do have an interest, and I, I would feel more comfortable if we had an administrative recommendation based on the things that we talked about, um, because we don't know, we don't have all the information, we, um, whether it's a recommendation to not sell it or a recommendation to sell it, I mean, we are talking about a specific piece of property, so, I think that that we could crack an administrative recommendation against that. This board has my, um, particular assets, and, and we, there was a mutual, I believe, introduced a, um, amendment to our policy where we require a supermajority, which is new under this board, um, but, I mean, to say we're not going to talk about it is to say no, so, that's how it feels to me today.
Mr. Crowder?
Since you're looking at me and, when you're directing at me, I didn't even have to talk about it, I just wanted to wait till we got more information. It's a really important decision, and there was a pretty big uproar in the past over selling green spaces, so I know it's important to the community, so I, I think we just need more information to know, you know, is, is that property potentially useful for the district for educational purposes, you know, is it what might be needed at some point in the future for something that's really important to the district? So, we need to think about finances and those kinds of things, I think, before we have a more serious discussion.
I guess I can, I mean, I can share a point of view from a couple of perspectives, from a financial perspective, that I couldn't present you with enough information that would garner a recommendation to sell that property. I think Mr. Meyer put it very clear, um, unless we were to get a way above market value for that property, there, there wouldn't be a compelling financial reason to sell that property at this time. I think it's not going to come down to, there's, I can tell you, there's not going to be any information financially, or even as we go through a planning process, that's going to say, "We should sell". I think what it would come down to, it comes down to, um, a decision for, for every reason behind the financial reasons, and I think that's the part that the board would have to consider, so, if the board would like us to bring a recommendation to, I'm kind of uncomfortable in saying we bring a recommendation to sell or bring a recommendation to not sell, um, but if, if the board would like that, we can certainly, I can work with Mr. Matt and Mr. Johnson, and we can bring a recommendation to the board, but I think, I think the community aspect, the emotional aspect, and all those things aren't going to be taken into consideration, and that's something I think the board needs to wrestle with, and we'll present the best financial information, and I, I mean, I'm pretty confident in where that will be at this point, and Mr. Matt and I discussed it numerous times from the financial, strictly financial perspective, and from, you know, if we look at different needs or possible future needs of the district and how that just probably can be used. So, I, I certainly hear the board, if, if you have a micro recommendation, we can bring one at some point in the future.
Mr. Meyer?
I don't particularly need a recommendation unless someone can come with a compelling reason why we should spend time, why, why we should spend administrative time on doing this. It, it seems to me, and stop me if I'm off agenda, please, but this is an issue of cemetery management, and that's not our problem, our problem is the school district, and if, um, if the semi, if the management of the cemetery fails, it's the city's problem, the city is not here, city is, you know, so, um, I believe that the, the failure of that cemetery is inevitable regardless of whether we sell them money or not, I mean, whether we sell, yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking, we're going to sell them money, we, the, the idea that, that handing more land to a failing business model is going to save that business is, is silly, so, for us to spend valuable administrative time examining a proposition that by its very nature will ultimately fail anyway after the management company sucks money out of the city, um, I, I don't see the point.
Mr. Ray?
I'm open to more information on this topic, but I, I want to give us a cautionary note, I would ask that if we're going to go forward with obtaining more information that, and I'm sure they will do this without me saying it, but I'll say it anyway, with the administration, uh, will report on this, if we were going to, for example, um, ask for some type of an appraisal to be done with respect to the property, uh, or obtain value information related to the property, it may be that that type of information should be obtained, or, excuse me, shared with the board by administration in an executive session situation, not in an open meeting situation. I'm pretty sure that the open meeting statutes contemplate that type of strategic bargaining information as something that would appropriately be addressed and discussed in a closed session situation, so, I would just ask that, uh, the administration be mindful of those types of issues that are going forward, and the board be mindful of it as well, uh, because, um, if we would ever get to this, to the point where we would be talking about an interest in selling any, any property or negotiating on any property, um, our ability to negotiate effectively, uh, may be undermined if that discussion and analysis takes place openly, as opposed to, and the executives say if a law permits us to do so, we'll consider so.
Mr. Ray?
Dr. Earl, I think maybe my suggestion of the motion is simply, my idea of one way to get more information as to what we know, what we think, um, and that's really what's behind any recommendations. To Mr. Meyer's point, um, yeah, we, it is a school district that we are responsible with, and, and I think though that, that allows us to say, okay, we bought this twelve years ago, we haven't done any payment, are we paying money to maintain it? Is anybody else going to ever want it and where it is? You know, I do think those are points of discussion.
Are you asking a question?
No, I'm, I'm responding to you, I'm saying, you know, when you say, "It's our business", cemetery, and I, I- piece of vacant land that we're mowing or maintaining or whatever, and, um, I, I do think that it's something that is not harmful to the district or irresponsible on behalf of the district, so, that's to your point, I'm sorry.
Mr. Meyer?
Lots of people would not mind owning a home adjoining cemetery, people own homes adjoining cemeteries right now. Now, so, the idea that somehow no one else wants that land is, is again silly, um, the idea that it has somehow some eternally depressed market value because it's next to a cemetery is silly, the idea that the, the reason that that cemetery is in financial difficulty is because it is landlocked. If we sell them this land, they will still be landlocked, and whatever problem they are facing now, they will inevitably face in the future, and the only difference will be that the management company will have pulled money out of the community, and the school district will no longer own the land, and in the end, the city will have to come in and rescue them. Inevitably, that is what I think is going to happen, and the only reason we are entertaining this right now, and the only reason we would have administration expend resources to investigate this is because we feel badly for them. Well, of course we do, but that's not a reason to give away the school district to, at a bargain price in a depressed market when we have other more important things to do to get this school district moving faster, that's not a reason to divert our time and attention to this issue.
Do you have something you'd add, Mr. Ray?
Well, yeah, I just want to-
Mr. Ray, can you start again your comments to the argument, not to the individual?
Okay, um, the idea that I would consider this depressed value because it's adjacent to the cemetery is not what I was saying, I'm considering adjacent to an athletic field, somebody might not want to buy it there, so, um, that's quite different. So, I, again, I, we're, we're in a, you know, a difficult position here, um, and I, I say that by not discussing it, we're making a decision.
I'm, I'm just going to try to summarize some of the discussion tonight. It seems to me, without Ms. Webber's discussion, that we have three people interested in more information, and three people, I think, maybe not interested, maybe four people interested.
So, um, the question for me is, what is the best venue for getting information? And I am concerned about putting a lot of administrative time into this, so, I might ask Dr. Earl if, um, if we could be spending a minimal amount of time, um, to discuss some of these more sensitive issues in closed session so we can better understand the offer or the potential buyer interest before us, and also better understand the impact to our assets, um, I think that would be helpful, at least for me, and I hear the majority of the rest of us saying that so.
Right, if there is no other board comment, is there any community comment on the superintendent's report? Right, Dr. Earl, do we have to? Having heard the board discussion, do you believe you can assess what your next step should be? You and I can discuss, I believe we'll need to have executive session. There is at this point one final opportunity for public comment on non-intended items. If there is anyone who has a comment on an item, not to extend, we will issue a report on the state attorney's address where it's making a comment. Seeing none, we will round off adjournment, board members will be convened for a special meeting, groups of the meeting to commit to board in-service, it will be a working session of the board and public comment, we have a change during that in-service. Following the adjournment of interns, the board will be convened to executive session pursuant to listed section one nine point eight five, so we'll say need to discuss open access compensation for administrators and non-represented employees. Is there a motion to adjourn? Some, thank you, is there a second?
Okay.
Mrs. Martin, would you call the role? Mr. Crowder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muthel?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Flatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seig?
Yes.
Can you adjourn?